Call me in order. City Clerk.
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Bowie.
Here.
Councilmember Phan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Nguyen.
Okay, please prepare yourself according to your faith. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting tonight. Gracious Lord, we thank you especially this holiday period for the times we spent together as Garden Grove family. Help us to work in harmony tonight and always as we seek to make the best decisions for our community. Grant us a peaceful holiday season of joy, goodness, and blessing. And Lord, we pray for a happy and successful 2015 New Year in which our worthy aspirations will be fulfilled. Amen.
Thank you. Oh, please remain standing and let's have our Assistant City Manager Susan Emery lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as
Let's move into oral communications. We have public comment cards. Anybody want to deliver remarks to the council? They're right there. Let's see. Mr. Craig Durfee.
Honorable Mayor and staff, citizens of Garden Grove, I'm here tonight because I've been working a lot on the concerns of transportation. I attended this last Planning Commission meeting respectfully on the issue of 12-741 Main Street and 10-882 Stanford, and that was for the United Methodist Church for 47 affordable apartment and low-income housing. While I'm not against the project in terms of the housing, I presented my concerns to the Planning Commission. It was not taken in its cumulative decision-making for changes since you have three, four waivers in the resolution for the general circulation plan. And I have an opportunity with Andrew, the Park Commissioner, to ride bikes on a Saturday at 10 o'clock, and the parking by the gym, the outdoor theater was full, and half the parking was full on the west side. So I came by here the other night, Friday night, Friday or Saturday, at 6:00, and they had a great event for the church, and they had one for the Catholic Church, and it consumed all the parking in the area that could be possible, even Josh's place. I think what we have is a lack of coordination of our parking, maximize potential between the college. Maybe we can look at parking permits, but part of the CPU requirement for this project was to ensure that they have enough parking for their needs and if they have to have more services for their church. But they didn't take into consideration that if they have a guest of those 47 units, where are they going to park? So if you have a great art event happening for Shakespeare outdoors, where are they going to park? And if you have a park where they're supposed to play soccer, where are they going to park? You've got mixed, advanced and mixed-approved projects that are existing that is going to impede the functionality of the overall circulation plan downtown. It's important that we look at this and hold this project back until we get a new Planning and Traffic Commission and the Reimagination Plan from Cal Poly is coming out. I spoke to the professor. I had some input, and she liked it. For this thing to really kick off for re-imagination, we've got to be careful that we don't have to hire employees to monitor the parking and traffic issues at night. I think there are concerns here about the issue of the crosswalks. I ask that they could put this in when they build a new development, that they incorporate lighting, pedestrian safety. We just had an event on Burkehurst and Garden Grove Boulevard. We just had a lady with a baby and a gentleman in L.A. I mean, people are not, we have to be mindful that this is going to be a city low-income housing bond fund, my understanding. So the city's going to be involved in this, one way or the other, to raise the money to build this project. And it's really important that we build upon active transportation, having a relationship with our school board so that we can maybe use their facilities in a shuttle situation in the back of their parking lot. I know that Westminster, they have a college there right next to the police station, and they're renting out the parking facility for the students. So there are innovative ways that we can mitigate the overcrowding for growth downtown Main Street. And I ask you to hold this project back until we can get all the facts together so we have the master plan, as I was discussing with Susan, so that we have a cohesive plan. And my essay concluding is that if we had a calendar of the events for the church and other Shakespeare and the gym theater, and we put it on the paper and see the number of parking is needed, we would know the high demand and the low demand so we don't impede on the overall success of downtown Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. I want to wish everyone a happy holiday season, whether it's Christmas, Hanukkah, Chinese New Year, whatever the holiday coming up, I hope everyone has a great one. And in that spirit, I noticed that a lot of people are dressed in holiday colors, and I would too, were not for the fact that I am to some degree in mourning. I'm in mourning for an individual who passed away about a week and a half ago. I attended a commemoration of his life in Costa Mesa. That gentleman was Jack Hammett. Now, Jack Hammett was a former mayor of Costa Mesa, member of the city council, a reserve police officer for 20 years, and involved in many civic activities in Costa Mesa. But how would a Garden Grove resident be involved with Costa Mesa? Because of Jack Hammett. Jack was in the Navy at the time of the attack on Pearl Harbor. He was a hospital corpsman at the hospital at the time of the attack. He was one of a small and growing smaller group of what we call Pearl Harbor survivors. And Jack passed away, and he left a legacy. And that legacy was a group known as the Freedom Committee of Orange County. The first time I went to one of the meetings of the Freedom Committee, there were about a dozen people there. The Freedom Committee has grown. We are almost at 200 members now. Members of the Freedom Committee are there for one purpose, to pass along to our children the history, the living history of our country. These are veterans from World War II, Korea, Vietnam, the Middle East wars. We have pilots who flew B-17s and B-24s over Europe. We have helicopter pilots who flew missions in Vietnam. We have veterans that served in the Navy in the Pacific campaigns in World War II. But the whole purpose is for these veterans to go out to the schools and talk to the students and tell them of their own experiences, give them an idea of what actually happened. Now, Freedom Committee meets on the second, I'm sorry, on the first Wednesday of every month in Costa Mesa at 11:30 at the Community Meeting Center. And anyone who has an opportunity to come to our meetings, they will be amazed at the number of veterans from all periods that they will meet there and listen to their stories. Matter of fact, many of them have gone to our high school right across the street to talk to the students. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking that you close this meeting in honor of Jack Hammett, a true American and a hero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rod Powell.
I better turn my cellphone off, do you think? My name is Rod Powell, and greetings to our new mayor. I know you already, this is your second meeting, but you've been working like crazy from what I've read on the computer, on some of the websites. And welcome to our new councilman. And hi, everybody. I came down here because I thought maybe our new city manager, which is you, sir? I hope. I can't imagine it being more qualified. I think we're going to be, we're so lucky to have someone. I didn't, I don't know what was going to happen in the city here. I wanted to explain a couple of things of what's been going on in our city. A lot, actually. We've, for almost two decades, had an individual who was on our council either as a councilman or as mayor. And we have, I have, as a citizen, felt like we've been in a dictatorship. What our former mayor wanted is what we have. We have passed, or not passed, we had a vote 20 years ago that was for what the city was recommending that we do, the citizens, like myself, was recommending that we do when we need to pick a new councilperson, as in when somebody moves up into a higher office or resigns, as Andrew Doe did, and leaves the position open. Twice, under our former mayor's watch, we went against that, and he boldly states, well, that was only a, you know, I don't remember the word, a recommendation, you know, but we voted for that. You know, we still voted that as citizens, we want you to pick the next, the runner-up from the previous election. If that had happened, our new councilman would have been here two years sooner, and Mr. Beard would be out and probably not have been elected this time. That's what we're looking at now. We have one councilman here that was, two councilmen here who were appointees. That's how it's worked in our city for 20 years. You pick, you pick a boy, pick a guy, your project, your person, your man, that will be on your side if you're in the mayor's seat or council seat or whatever, and you put him on the Planning Commission to give him some kind of credibility, and then you appoint him when the opportunity presents itself. And 40% of our council right now is appointees. I'm so unhappy that, I hope you guys can do something, as we did with this previous umbrella thing. Mr. Beard brought that up, but he did not bring up the fact that Fire Chief Barlog got his sweetheart deal pushed through before Mayor Nguyen and Councilman Bowie could be on our seat to contribute to that vote. And he begged Councilmember Beard for a second. That was out of order. You don't sit there in that mayor's seat and beg someone to do a second, especially when it's in your own benefit. You're quieting up somebody that probably had information that would maybe put you in jail, and you're pushing through something. That's what Broadwater did. He had, he pushed this thing through, begging a second, and then, I'm sorry to say, Councilmember Nguyen, Deana Nguyen, Jones, Beard, all voted for that. Councilmember Phan voted against it. It should have been pushed another week to this. This is what we're facing in this city. This is the, you know, it's incredible that a mayor could get away with that. You know, I feel offended that this has happened, and that's the reason I came down here tonight. I just wanted to explain some of what's been going on in our city and hope that now with the new year starting and a new council and a new city manager, I wish you could stay longer, that we're going to move forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any of my colleagues have any remarks in response to comments? No? Okay. I'd like to take the liberty to recognize some folks in the audience. We do have some folks that ran for office in a previous race. I'd like to recognize a mayoral candidate, Albert Ayala, and his wife. Thank you for being here. We also have a candidate for city council, John O'Neil, in the audience as well. And I do see my colleague from the previous position I held on the school board, Student Trustee Stephen Pomeroy, in the audience as well. Will you wave for us? All right. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to consent items. Item 4A.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 4A is approval to waive full reading of ordinance is listed.
Move it.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay, we have no public hearings tonight, and we'll move on to item 6A.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a letter of resignation from Planning Commissioner Trung Nguyen. It doesn't require action of the council, it's just a receive and file. Also, just to note, Deputy City Clerk Pomeroy Terry has mentioned to me that the application for commissions is, the deadline for the applications is January 8th.
January 8th is the last day to apply for city commissions.
Yeah, that's correct.
And applications are available online. I've seen them, pretty simple, very easy. Folks can select multiple commissions to be considered for, and we do encourage the public to apply, so please do. Item 7A.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 7A is approval of an agreement with Alan Roder for interim city manager services, and City Attorney Tom Nixon will be providing a staff presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before the city council this evening is a proposed agreement with Alan Roder for interim city manager services. The agreement provides for a start date of January 1 with a outside ending date of June 30th of 2015. The city has the ability to terminate the agreement if it completes its search for a permanent city manager prior to June 30th. The compensation under the agreement is $120 an hour, and Mr. Roder will not receive any other benefits aside from that compensation. It's recommended that the city council approve the agreement, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have one question, Mayor.
Sure.
Now, as I understand, the length of the employment would be based on the number of hours cannot exceed 960 hours. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the time that we set for June 30th, it's just, for now, it's just a date that we would suit for, but, you know, if he need to pass that, as long as we do not pass in 960 hours, we can easily extend the date. Is that correct?
We would, I believe, have to get approval from Calpers, from which Mr. Roder is currently a retired employee, to be able to do that, but in the outside event, that's what we would look to do.
Well, but we would only need the Calpers' permission if we exceed the 960 hours, but not the June 30th. Is that correct?
Yeah, 960 hours is what is available during any fiscal year.
Okay.
Any other? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, really quick, just to clarify that, but our fiscal year is July 1st, right?
Yeah, it starts again in July 1st.
So theoretically, it could continue because if it went into July, then that would be the beginning of a new fiscal year. Good to know.
Any other discussion? It's not, it's not the 12-month, it's, because we start in January 1st, so our fiscal years end in June, so not to say that we need Alan more than that, but in the event that we need him to stay past June 30th, we can get another 960-hour maximum time as of July 1st.
I believe we can, yes.
Okay.
Good to know.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's call for a vote.
I'd like to move it. Did we move it? I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Do you have a second?
I second it.
You second it.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Great, welcome aboard, Mr. Alan Roder. I'd like to take this opportunity to read a few things about him. Let's see. So, Mr. Roder is a homegrown Garden Grove person, having gone to Rancho Alameda's High School, and he retired from the city of Costa Mesa in 2011 after serving 25 years as city manager. And I read in the paper that he became city manager of Costa Mesa when he was 33 years old, younger than I am. And he was originally hired by the city in 1975, so I guess we do some calculation there, but he has extensive experience, passion, and dedication. I think that our team here as a city council, we went through a very fair process, we had a lot of great deliberation, and we chose the right man for the right job. So at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Roder, would you like to share any remarks? Please do.
Thank you, Mayor Nguyen, and honorable members of the city council. I am so excited to be in this position to serve you and help the residents and businesses and staff and everyone in Garden Grove move forward. I am humbled by your confidence and will absolutely do the very best job humanly possible to serve you and this community, for members of the public as well as for your staff, with the exception of the city attorney. And Tom, please cut me short if I'm violating any closed-session confidentiality, but for members of the public, you should be extremely proud of this council and the manner in which they proceeded with very little time to do extensive preparation and outreach for a newly seated city council to conduct this process in the very professional manner in which they did really impressed me, and it simply reemphasized for me that my choosing to apply was a sound decision. And I really appreciate your confidence. I'm struck by all of my conversations with each of you about how intensely supportive you are of working together and being successful.
Yes.
And for however much a part of that, I can help you do that and help this community do that, I hope in six months, even though, with all due respect, Councilman Bowie, my wife might have things to say if we were to be talking about another six-month extension at the end of June, but I appreciate your raising that point. I'm not a professional interim city manager. I'm here because of both my professional background, but equally so my personal connection to the community of Garden Grove. That makes us special, and I think that is in large part why this is going to be a terrific relationship, and I so look forward to jumping in and getting going and hope we will be able to utilize some of this holiday timeframe for me to spend time with you individually. I will make whatever time is needed. I don't want to take away from your families. I'll probably do enough of that in the future as it is, but I want to make myself available and learn and listen and then contribute. I'm happy to answer any questions members of council may have.
Excellent, thank you. Colleagues? Any comments?
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Come next year.
Your staff has been terrific in welcoming me. I couldn't, could not have asked for more.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You can also find more information about Mr. Roder on our website and also on our app. Okay, so let's move on to item 8A and 8B.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the ordinance for second reading. I'll read the ordinance title for you. This is 8A Amendment Number A-008-2014 to permit a newly-defined use art gallery retail business with tattoo art studio in the CC2 Civic Center Main Street Zone. Action item ordinance number 2850 for second reading and adoption by title only entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Amendment Number A code amendment to allow an art gallery retail business with tattoo art studio use in the CC2 Zone Civic Center Main Street Zone subject to conditional use permit approval.
Thank you. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Call for a vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay, item nine, oh, I'm sorry, item 8B.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a second ordinance for second reading. This is citywide engineering and traffic speed survey establishing speed limits on roadways within the city as required by the California Vehicle Code. Action item ordinance number 2851 for second reading and adoption by title only entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Amending Chapter 36 of Title 10 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code Establishing Speed Limits for Certain Designated City Streets Based Upon an Updated Traffic and Engineering Speed Survey."
Move it. Second.
Call for a vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay, and matters from the mayor, city council members, and the city manager.
Any council members have matters?
I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a healthy, happy, and prosperous New Year ahead.
Thank you.
Same here. Just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and for any who would like to come to perform an art where I will be singing in Vietnamese. So there will be a reception and, and performance right there.
Is there a ticket price for that?
The VIP ticket price is $40, and the regular price is $30. And I think there's only one or two, you know, table left, so I think there's maybe only like 10 or 20 tickets available. And I understand Councilman Chris Van will be joining us. Is that right?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
And are you be playing your violin, too, Councilman Bear? Wow.
No, my violin is for your wedding.
Oh, thank you. It was very good, by the way. Lots, lots of performances. Okay, you know, you forget the venue. So Parasol Seafood this Friday at 6:00, $40 ticket. Thank you.
Again, I want to echo what my two colleagues have already said. Happy holidays, everyone. I want to just say thank you and welcome Alan to our great city. I want to congratulate again Brother Phat and Brother Bao on doing such a fine job on your first few days here on the council. And I want to thank all of us for being so together and cohesive in this rather, not hard, but unique time for Garden Grove. So again, happy holidays, everyone, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you. Happy holidays to everyone. I hope everyone has time to spend some quality time with their families, and I think I speak on behalf of all of us that we're looking forward to rolling up our sleeves and diving back in in the new year and taking care of a lot of great city business that we have to look forward to in this new year.
Yes. I have, thank you. I have two matters that I'd like to agendize for our next meeting. One, to strike a couple of municipal codes, section 2.09020 and 2.09090. City count, city ma, sorry, attorney, would you please read what those two codes are for us?
Basically, section 2.09.020 provides that when a new city council takes office following the most recent election, there shall be a cooling off period of 120 days during which the considered replacement of the incumbent city attorney shall be held in abeyance. And secondly, section 2.09.090 basically provides that not less than 30 days before the removal of the city attorney, the city attorney shall be given a statement of deficiencies orally or in writing with an opportunity to respond.
Okay. So I will move that for our next meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Let's call for a vote on that.
Motion received. Four yes votes. With Councilmember Bowie voting no.
I'm sorry. Correction?
Oh, I'm sorry. Fan, I'm sorry. With Councilmember Fan voting no.
Thank you. And I have another item I'd like to agendize for next meeting, and that is the Next Century Cities is a national initiative with currently 50 mayors participating in a collaborative and informational process where mayors would get to meet one another and talk about broadband and how internet is a necessity. And there are six principles that the mayor would have to agree to abide by to be a part of the Next Century Cities, and I reviewed that, and I'd like to allow my colleagues to join in the consideration and formally, as a city, participate. So I'd like to agendize that for further discussion and consideration. I move that. Thank you. Call for a vote?
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Wonderful. I'd like to welcome Mr. Alan Roder. Thank you for being here. You know, you, you have so much experience and wisdom and talent, and we are all very excited about having you onboard so that we are able to take our next steps forward in our city, very necessary steps. So thank you. Also, happy holidays to all of our families in Garden Grove, to all of you city staff, and to all the folks that really make our city possible, whether you live in Garden Grove or not, particularly the staff. I'm so excited to start the new year and meeting with all of our directors and learning and listening. That is one of my priorities, to learn about the city. I'm here to support the good work that's being done and also to help make sure that we are efficient and that we are wise about our decision-making. So look forward to that. So wish everybody a Happy New Year as well. At this moment, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in honor of Mr. Jack Hemmett. Thank you, Mr. Charles Mitchell, for sharing about Mr. Jack Hemmett with us. And also like to close the meeting in honor of Zlakets from Main Street. Anyone else? Colleagues? Okay.